Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay, Chief Kazi, which means Judge of Alodeum, Moors Paradeum, Anti Colorado. Today, we'll talk about how did the Moors lose their land to the colonists? So keep in mind, today is part two series of this particular question of how did the Moors lose their land to the colonists? This is part two, alright? So today, we'll go over the definitions of a few words in the Blacks Law Dictionary, 4th Edition. If you do not have a 4th Edition, you can always email me at info@ampacgov.org, and I'll send you the 3rd, 4th, and 5th Edition PDF version, alright? So keep that in mind. Alright, so the purpose of the class today is try to determine how did the Moors lose their land? And the direct answer is through the power of a pen. And that's called hypothecation and it's cheat. However, there are other words that also coincide with that hypothecation. Because they couldn't just use their abstract, talking about the colonists. I.e. these people who call themselves the American connotative. Because denotative, meaning linguistics of American, is the copper-colored people found here by the Europeans. Now, the term "American" applies, has been applied to the descendants of Europeans. So right then and there, they tell you that they're not the Americans, but they took on the title, the title of American, alright? So today, we're talking about titles. How did they give themselves titles? How did they take the Moors' titles away from the Moors and apply that same title to themselves? They did it with a pen, through hypothecation. But before they could do that, the first thing they had to do is through a cheat, say you were dead with a pen. And after they said you was dead, they took on your place as an impostor, put on a face, and started acting and pretending to be a Moor, and started making legislation that further empowered themselves and further undermined the Moors. However, they also put in writing their deceitful acts, actions, that they did to enforce their trustee position, their fulfer position, their manager position over the Moors' estate, a state. So therefore, they created this thing called "state," S-T-A-T-E. They hide behind this thing called a "state" in order to enforce themselves upon the trust, the global trust, the SISUV trust that they set up to take over the Moors' land with a pen. So we're talking about what they did with the pen and how they're hiding behind false titles. And they were exposed, their fraud, in writing. But they know that "black people," quote-unquote, don't read. If you look at the definition of "black," which is an adjective, it'll tell you in the linear entry that these people who go by the brand, identity of "black," that they have zero, zero stimuli, stimulus of the retina. What does that mean? They don't read, and even when they do think they're reading, they're only pronouncing words because they don't even understand the definition of half the words, or they don't understand the context and meaning of the history behind those words. Alright, so we'll talk about that today. So for the purpose of the class, let's start with the first definition called "civil leader mortus." You don't have to look it up right now, we're just gonna go with it since we have it on screen, but the purpose of the viewers at home, you can find "civil leader mortus" in the Blacks Law Dictionary 4th Edition, alright? So the definition of "civil leader mortus," you must understand before you even get into the linear entry, sorry about that, my computer's a little... It's unbelievable, man, when it keeps doing that. Unbelievable. Okay. Definition of "civil leader mortus," first things first, civil leader, that's civil. Mortus, mortus means dead, like a mortuary. Mort, mortus, mortuary, dead. It's dead civics, alright? What type of civics? Human being versus a human. What type of civics? Human being versus a human. Human beings are now a person with superior mental development, articulate speech, and upright stance. What's a human? A human is an adjective. A human is just one step above a human being. Excuse me, one step above an animal. A human, a human, as a standalone word, is an adjective. A human is just one step above an animal. And animals usually walk on all fours. That's called chattel. Chatter is what they call a compound word of Christian and cattle, put together, chatter, all four. So they're saying, yeah, you can talk, you can walk, you can think better than an animal, but you're only one level above an animal. Because those are human beings, it's the noun. It is what you call superior mental development, articulate speech, and upright stance. What does that mean? You're not on all fours no more. You finally figured out the game, and now you can stand on your square and enforce human being rights, whereas everybody else is walking around as chattel because they still in the belief status. A human being deals with fruition. Humans, the adjective, deal with beliefs. So therefore, once you recognize you have a nationality, number one, it makes you a noun. Then after that, you have to study civics, which is law and history. So today, we're gonna learn about how the Moors lost their land because they lacked nationality and they lacked civics. And the colonists came in with a pen and wrote them out of history. So "civil leader mortus," civilly dead. So immediately, they already talk about the word "dead" already. That's what you find on the definition of it's cheat, they're talking about someone dying, right? Under feudal law. Keep in mind, what does feudal law mean? So feud is a compound word, feud with who? The owls. And what's the opposite of feudal? Alodeo. Alodeo starts with A-L, the owl. Alodeo is the highest, superior national. The feudal is subordinate to the owl, okay? So therefore, let's get an understanding. So therefore, let's get an understanding of "civil leader mortus." It means you're dead in the eyes of the law, you're dead in civics. Therefore, that's why the United States of America doesn't teach civics in school. Why? Because everybody's dead already. Why teach civics to dead people? They only teach civics to nationals, not civics to dead people who are dead on paper through a cheat and hypothecation. Did you catch that? Because everybody's name is in all capital letters, just meaning dead on paper. If you go out to a grave site and look at a tombstone, the name is in all caps. That lets the coroner and through your political document called the death certificate, know that you're dead. But watch this, as soon as you were born in the hospital, they brought out a birth certificate, they put your name in all caps on the birth certificate. So you were born into sin, ignorance, because you didn't even say objection to the fact that birth certificate is in all caps. So therefore, that name on the birth certificate is not the Moor, nor is it the hybrid European that's on there that calls himself white. So let's get back to the point about how the Moors lost their land through a pen. The colonists, the administrators, used a pen. So through the pen, the Moors have to bring themselves back to life. Through their body politics of birth records, through their ratified government for the people by the people. The matriarch or consul has to sign the birth record and bring the Moors back to life. That's a political document. Birth certificates are political documents. Death certificate is a political document. So therefore, the Moors must have birth records signed off as a witness by matriarch and by the judge of the consul, the kazi, through their consul of court, to make it official. The mother makes it official along with the judge, because the judge is the judicial branch that stands behind that autograph. So therefore, the Moors have to come back to life with a pen because the colonists wrote them out of history and wrote them out of their blood ship, bloodline, their consanguinity, their airship, their hereditiments, incorporeal, et cetera, with a pen. That's how the Moors get their land back. But let's keep talking about how did they lose in the first place, let's go back in history. Because that law and history goes together, let's talk about that. So let's look at the definition of "color." In the Blacks Law Dictionary, Henry Kemble Black, 4th Edition, it is page 331. So we'll read several definitions under "color." It's very important to understand that because when we first start studying color, we start looking at it from an identity perspective to make sure that you understood that you're not black. Because the word "black" never had anything to do with complexion, it had to do something with legal status under a caste system to put you at the bottom. And these people who call themselves white was at the top on a privileged status. Human beings are nationals. And in nationals, Moors are on the top, and hybrid Europeans are on the bottom. Why do I say that? Because everybody and all scientists, anthropologists, et cetera, know that the hybrid European has the recessive DNA, gene. And Moors have the dominant DNA. So therefore, they already know the Moors from a nationality primo genitor status. And that the hybrid Europeans at the bottom based upon nationality because they were the last ones to come into the human family. They're the little brother and sister out of the human family. But what they did is they created humans, adjective, chattel, property, that are not living human beings. And what they do, they created a caste system that now, they flipped it and said white and black on the bottom. Because on their nationality is just the opposite. They have to create civil leader mortus. People turn them into aliens and subjects so that they can keep the white status and others who took, call themselves black, was at the bottom. So how do they do that? With a pen. So let's talk about that. Let's look at the definition of "color." Keep it in mind that all legislation comes from the mothers. So we're gonna allow the mothers to read the definition of "color," that way, we can start to bring humanity back through the mothers, alright? So if we can, we have a matriarch read the definition of "color."
Color, an apparent, semblance, semblance, or...
Simulacrum.
Simulacrum, as distinguished from that which is real, which is real. A prima facie or apparent right, hence a deceptive apparent, a plausible, assumed exterior, consoling, concealing, a lack of reality.
Stop. So let me read it back. Keep in mind, we're talking about government officials right now. These are the administrators who use the pen to write the Moors out of history and out of law. How did they do it? It was called "color." So when you read this definition of "color," start thinking about these pseudo-administrators over the United States of America, not to be confused with the United States, two separate entities. How did they do it? Watch this. "Color, an appearance, semblance, or simulacrum, as distinguished from that which is real." So therefore, their status as being representative is not real. Why? Because they're a corporation, United States of America's corporation, and U.S. thought's corporation, the United States corporation. Also, through their birth certificate, they've all said they're all dead in the eyes of the law. Civil leader mortus, because they're checking the box that says "white." They denationalize themselves. They're not human beings. They are humans on paper. They denationalize themselves. So keep in mind, under that Naturalization Act of 1870, that officially charged anyone who called themselves a United States of America, America, citizen, an alien and a subject. Under the definition, it was called denizen. Denizen, I believe it's D-E-N-I-Z-E-N. We'll talk about that next, alright? After we get through these definitions of "color." Denizen, just make a little bookmark of that, denizen, we'll talk about that. So therefore, these people call themselves white, they denationalize themselves just so they can hold on to power because they denationalized the Moors and called them black, negro, Afro-American, mulatto, Indian, negro, et cetera. They had to keep the crayon game going. They call themselves white, and it makes sense, everybody else must be a crayon too. Oh, you black, that makes sense. Oh, they over there, they're red, oh yeah, keep the crayon game going. Matter of fact, let's ask more colors, yellow people and brown people, all five families. There are Nam de Geers, denationalized status. Let's get back to the point. So therefore, when you're reading "color," finishing the reading. "A prima facie or apparent right," it's an apparent right. What are we talking about? Let's stick to point. The administrators, i.e. legislators, your House of Representatives, your senators, your executive branch, which is the president, and all the departments that he appoint people over. All these people have an apparent right, but they don't have the true de jour right. So therefore, they're called de facto government. De facto government and de jour government are two separate things. De jour means of truth government. De facto means of fact government. Well, wait a minute, truth, fact? Well, I thought fact was true. No. Fact is like saying Santa Claus is real. If you ask a child, is Santa Claus real, he'll say yes. But an adult knows Santa Claus is a fiction. So the truth is, Santa Claus is a fiction, but if you ask a child, is Santa Claus real, he'd say yes, that's a fact. Why does he say it's a fact? Because he saw him at the mall. He saw him on TV. He sent him a wish list in the mail and put a stamp on it and wrote a letter to Santa Claus in the North Pole. He thinks he's real, and guess who told him he was real? His parents. First teachers of the child lied to the child, deceived the child, but not intentional. Because most people just think it's just some cute fairy tale story, keep telling the story. Next, you know, the child finds out at some point around 12, 10, 12 years old, because the rest is friends his age telling him, man, Santa Claus ain't real. You sound like a big dummy. Then they find out the truth. So that's a distinction of de jour government versus de facto government, making distinctions. So under "color," the United States of America, not to be confused, the United States corporations are de facto governments, they're not real. Under "color," simulacrum, prima facie. Let's continue to read. Hence, a deceptive appearance, they're deceptive. So if they're deceptive, what does that mean? They're committing fraud, because they're not telling you the truth and nothing but the truth. And you know the excuse they give you? Ignorance of the law is no excuse. That's what they hide behind. But they're the ones pushing this legality on everyone and not law. Let's continue. "A plausible, assumed exterior." What exterior you talking about? They got these official name tags and department heads and et cetera. They call themselves white people, they call themselves the Americans, and you got people calling themselves black, that's also a fake title. That's not real. All these things are fake. You ever watch the movie Matrix? They go in and out of two different jurisdictions. One is a fake world where everybody looks like they got it going on. Everybody likes superheroes, they got the shades on. And then they go back to another jurisdiction where it's real. Two different jurisdictions. One is de facto, prima facie, semblance, a plausible exterior, fake exterior. It's fake. It's an illusion. But as long as you think they're government, public government, then you automatically give them the so-called honor of being in that title, where that title is fake, it's color, alright? So... Let's go now down to the definition of "color of authority." Because we're talking titles of government representatives under the Vienna Convention, 1969. Look up Article 50, and it'll tell you corruption by a state representative. What was the corruption of the state representative? It was fraud, which is Article 49 of the Treaty of Vienna, the Vienna Convention. Like I said, you look at Article 48 of the Vienna Convention, it says there was an error. What was the error? Fraud, Article 49. Well, how did they commit the fraud? It was a state representative, Article 50. But what did he do? They used a pen. They did something that was legally invalid, morally corrupt, and socially unjust, and scientifically false through doctrines of discovery to claim a superior position over the natural people that they turn into persons. What I just told you, you can find out in the annex of the International Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous People, that's right in the annex, what I just said. United Nations already called them frauds and already said on the record that they're alleged criminals. Who's alleged criminals? Colonists, settlers, pilgrims, expatriates of Great Britain. Let's continue with the definition of "color of authority." Why are we reading this? To find out how the Moors lost their land. How did they lose it? Through what?
Pen.
Say it again?
The pen.
The pen. Let's find out what this pen did. "Color of authority," let's read it by the mothers.
That semblance or presumption of authority sustaining the acts of a public officer, which is derived from his apparent title to the office or from a writ or other process in his hands, apparently valid and regular.
Okay, that's...
His law.
His law. So under "color of authority," watch this. They said these people who call themselves colored, connotated, are minorities. What does minority means? Mean minor authority. Minority means minor authority, compound word, put together, minority, minor authority. And right here, it's talking about "color of authority." So as soon as they made you a minority, they immediately put you in a subordinate position. So therefore, what's the, what is the synonym, excuse me, acronym? No, excuse me.
Opposite.
Antonym, yes. Back to point. So therefore, what is the antonym to minority? So the word "minor," what's the opposite of "minor?"
Major.
Major. So if you look up major, when they call themselves the majority, what does majority mean? It means they have the major position of authority. It also means that they are the adult in the room, and everybody else is the child, because minor means child. So in authority, they took an adult position and made you the child, meaning your little brother is claiming to be the oldest. That's a violation of law. You've always been the oldest, but they told you you was the youngest. And you accepted the brand of being the minority. Why they continue to push that majority on you? Because you always thought it had something to do with population of numbers. It has everything to do with your mental status. Because people over the age of 18 are still minorities. Why? Because they have minor thinking. Their concepts are flawed, because they think they're black. So Moors immediately become the adult in the room. As soon as you say Moor and claim your nationality, you immediately became the adult. Why? Because you just made the claim to your vast estate being the primo genitor oldest of all the other youngest nationals on planet Earth. You're the oldest by consanguinity. Let's get back to the read of "color of authority," continue to read.
That's the end of authority.
Okay, so let's get to the linear definition of it. "That semblance or presumption of authority, sustaining their acts." What kind of acts? See, they're acting as actors. So if they're actors, they're pretending to be somebody. Who are they pretending to be? That's the question.
The Moors.
The Moors. They're imposters, they're actors. Let's continue with the read. "Acts of..." Acts of...
Public officer.
Public officer. Wait a minute, it said right there, they're acting like public officers. So if they act like public officer, that really must, what's the opposite of a public officer? Private. You don't have public and private statuses. So if they act like the public, that means they really be private. So if they act like, if they're really the private, then who must be the public officer? The Moors. You see how this is going? They switch positions with you through a pen. Let's continue. "Which is derived from a apparent title to the office." It's an apparent title, but it ain't real. It's fake, it's an illusion, it's counterfeit, no different than the Federal Reserve note that they call money. Most people tell you, they pull that green piece of paper, it says money, and that is a fact. But is it true? The answer is no. The real money is gold and silver coins. But fact, the green paperback, is money amongst people that are minorities who don't know the truth. They don't know fiction from nonfiction. Let's continue. "From a apparent title to the office or from a writ." What is a writ? A writ is a written form, that's a paper. So how did they do all this? Through a writ, what's the writ? Legislation through their Congress. When I do like this, that means through the legislative branch, the judicial branch, which is the senators. Once they pass a bill amongst themselves, they send up to the executive branch, which is the President of the United States, and they sign it into law. It goes from a bill to becoming law as soon as the President signs it into law. That's called a writ. But it's really what you call a writ, i.e. a bill of attainder ex post facto, because they're doing things after the fact, trying to make it retroactive, that this is the new law. You can't do that without the consent of the people, and the people don't realize this happened. That's why they have to turn them into persons. Let's continue. "A writ or other process to his hands, apparently valid and regular." A process in his hands, whose hands? The colonists. See, with his hands, he did something. Why? Because he never earned the primo genitor status. He wanted to be here, and he was here. He had to... He wanted to be here, and he was here. He had to switch it. So with his hand, he did a writ. He passed a fraudulent document under what they call ex parte. Ex parte, E-X. It's two words, E-X-P-A-R-T-E. What is ex parte? That means that when you got two parties involved, you only really talking to one party, doing something one-sided. That's ex parte. Meaning they made a unilateral decision to do something and didn't get the consent of both parties. You gotta get consent. You don't get consent, that's fraud. So by his hand, did something apparent, apparently valid and regular. It's apparently valid, but it's not. It's nonvalid, which makes it null and void. Cause it's based upon an error. Vienna Convention, Article forty-eight, an error took place, E-R-R-O-R. Article forty-nine, fraud. They committed fraud. Article fifty, corruption by a state representative. You remember when we read the definition of it's cheat? It said what? The blood was corrupted. See, the United Nations knows exactly what the United States of America did to the indigenous, autarkist, Aboriginal Moors. They used a pen which is legally invalid, morally unjust, scientifically false, et cetera. Alright. Now that we going over the definition of color of authority, let's go on to the next color. Keep in mind, color means fake. Look up, let's look up the color of law next. Mothers.
The appearance or semblance without the substance of legal right is law.
Right. So let's go over it again, one more time, so we can get a overstanding, cause when you read, you must comprehend, you gotta go back. The appearance or semblance without the substance. What is the substance? Substance is what you call something essential. See, in order to be essential without substance, what is the substance? You must have blood pedigree. You must have a foundation. Here's the foundation. The foundation is the land. The firmament. And then you've got the people on that that are tied to the land. So the people and the land are one. That's the East State. That's the East State. The people and the land are one. That's the foundation. It's called consanguinity. That's called sovereignty in international law. That makes you the indigenous, autarkist people. Now watch this. So therefore, if that's the criteria to call yourself to have ownership of land to make a claim, that means if the colonists came in and they know they're not of the land, then they have to create something fake, cause they never had the substance. The substance is the land and consanguinity to the land. They never had the substance to claim to be sovereign. It's just a valid, invalid claim under possession and control through use of force. It has no substance for what they're doing, thus making it void ab initio, void ab initio. Void ab initio. It means void from the beginning. Void from the beginning. So everything that they issue is a decree. Basically since around the year eighteen sixty-five, let's just say when they killed Lincoln. Everything after that has been void ab initio. Void from the beginning. Let's continue. Color of office. Remember now, we're talking about government, government officials under the Vienna uh Convention. Article fifty talks about corruption by a state representative. And then fifty-one, coercion by the state, which is the corporation they use to hide behind to push their invalid usurpation, use of force, unexamined policies, doctrines of discovery, et cetera. So let's go ahead and read, mothers. Uh color of office.
An act unjustly done by the countenance of an office being grounded upon corruption to which the office is as a shadow and color.
Stop. Good job. Look at these choice verbs that's being said under color of office. Everybody calls themselves an officer. Call these people officers. Well, what is an officer? Let's read what an officer is. An act unjustly done by the, these words too small. Continuance.
Countenance.
Countenance of an office being grounded upon corruption in which the office is as a shadow and color. What does that mean, a shadow? See, a shadow is not substance. It's pretending to be you. A shadow will move around, but it's not you. You move your arm, the shadow moves its arm. It's a shadow government. Because they're imposters. They're pretending to be you, but it's not you. It doesn't have substance. A shadow don't have consanguinity, it don't have blood in it. Even though it may mock you and do everything that you do, but it's not you. It's simulacra, prima facie. It appears to be valid, but it's not valid. Just cause it's moving around don't make it a human being. It's an adjective. Shadow by definitions and now, believe it or not, person, place, or thing, but the reality, when they say shadow color, they're talking about the fact that the Moors are the real entity, the real substance, and the impostor is the colonist, pilgrim, settler. Just now call themselves the American, cause it's an applied term. And they call themselves president, senator, congressman, officer, cop, officer, sheriff, marshal, ICE, all your alphabet boys, FBI, DEA, it's all shadow. They never had the authority to have jurisdiction over Moors. For they claiming jurisdiction over Moors by what? A pen. Because they brought the Moors into their jurisdiction of their corporation. Through a pen. Let's continue with the read.
A claim or assumption of right to do an act by virtue of an office made made by a person who is legally uh destitute of any such right.
Stop. Let's go back and comprehend. A claim. So they're making a claim or assumption. It's just an assumption, but it ain't real. It's a fact, it's not truth. Of right to do an act. What's an act? Actor, impostor. By virtue of an office. In the office, they using the power of the pen. Made by a person who is legally destitute of any such right. Destitute mean they're lacking. Void. They're void, lacking. Cause there's no consanguinity attached to it. There's no airship attached to whatever claim they're making of a superior. They can't do it. They're the little brother. That's why you go back and read the story about Esai and Jacob in the Bible. Esai and Jacob, right? You remember the mother said, she was talking to God, she says, why? Is there so much rumbling going on in my stomach? I'm paraphrasing. She's talking to God, the mother. She said, well, you got two separate nations inside of you fighting. It was a feud going on. Two separate nations. That mean there was two separate types of people inside of her. So Esai was the first born out of her womb. Esai represents the first born, primo genitor. Jacob came out second. But as soon as Esai came out, Jacob, through that anthropomorphic story, he reached his hand out and grabbed Esai's heel, grabbed his foot. What does that represent? He was grabbing for the foundation, the foot, the foundation. Remember upright stance, definition of human being? He was grabbing for the foundation, cause the foundation is the land, the birthright to the superior position being the primo genitor to be able to control the laws, the air, and the water, the law. So Jacob was mad. He reached out the womb and grabbed Esai by his heel because he came out second. He would never, ever, ever have the first primo genitor status, talking about Jacob, unless one of two things happen. One, Esai, the oldest brother, would have to die and by default Jacob would become the beneficiary. Or two, Esai had to give his little brother the rights to have a superior position. So what have the black people done who were the primo genitor Moors? They let their little brother, the colonist, i.e. the British, chiefly British by definition of white. Look up the definition of white. It tells you chiefly British. So the British are the little brother, Jacob. And the Moors is Esai. Esai gave up his birthright to his little brother, Jacob. How? He decided to be black. He gave up his birthright, cause he wasn't claiming to be a Moor. He wasn't claiming to be Esai no more. So therefore, the little brother is ruling the big brother with a pen. And by tacit acquiescence, the little brother just accepted it. I mean, excuse me, the oldest brother, this is Esai, Jacob. Esai, the oldest brother, decided to be in this position under tacit acquiescence or just direct consent. Cause you got a lot of conscious Moors out there that are set outs, conversals, corn tale pro that call themselves pastors, ministers, call themselves judges, lawyers, barristers, attorneys, call themselves entertainers. A lot of these people know the history and they decide to stay down here. Why? Because their little brother is writing the checks. It's because their little brother is giving them a five oh one C three kickback, so they don't have to pay taxes. So what's happening now? You got Jacob, little brother, ruling big brother. But what's happening? So all of a surety, the big brother is coming back into the consciousness of being a Moor and now creating a body politic, a government fully ratified by its people's consciousness of being competent. And all of a surety, this is what's happening. We gonna get back into our rightful place of being the primo genitor. This ain't about racism. This ain't about classism. This is about consanguinity, primo genitor status by common law of Mother Nature. If you're the oldest, you're just the oldest. That's just nature. There's no argument behind that. That's not politics. It is what it is. You go over to, right now, you go over to Great Britain, Queen Elizabeth running the house. But if she transitions, who's up next to become king? Prince Charles. Prince Charles dies, who, who's up next?
His son.
Uh huh, his son, Prince William. Who's up next if Prince William die?
Prince Harry.
Prince Harry becomes king. It's called primo genitor. It's seniority. It ain't, it ain't no politics. It is what it is. It's blood. Who came out first? The Moors were here first. This ain't about being negative or attacking someone because of the complexion they skin, et cetera. The question is, are you a Moor? Soon as you claim that nationality, you immediately become the primo genitor. And the colonist knows that. He ain't stop trying to be back down here again. He knows even in Europe, if this is Europe, right now, he's up here in Europe. But even he knows that the Europeans are the original Phoenicians, Morbicannonites, Kushites, copper colored people. And he's ruling over them as the little brother over the big brother. But guess what they doing in Europe right now, which is named after Queen Europa, Phoenician, Melanated. They're Moors are there pushing back. Eventually, the colonists gonna be at the bottom all around planet Earth. That's not a negative. That's a call, a correction. That's a restoration. That's reparations. What's reparations? To repair. Back to his original status. They call it racism. Some people call it reverse racism. No, it's just simply the truth. And people pushing facts. No, let's just get back to the truth. Because the truth will set you free. Let's look at the word liberation, and then we get back to point. Liberation. Liberty, liberation. Liberation is a compound word. Liber means free. Ation means nation. Free nation. Liberation, free nation. Well, how do you get to become a free nation? Liberation. Watch this. Through a libre. You ever heard of a libre? A libre is a book. You ever go into the library, library? Libre, that's Spanish for book. So in order to get liber, you gotta go to the libre, libre, library, library for what? Books. You see? Books. You gotta read. As good brother Sevier Bay likes to say, you gotta read more than two point, two point five books. Your brother Sevier Bay, thank you. So let's get back to point.
Liberation.
Go for it. Let's read the definition of liberation.
Liberation in civil law. The extinguishment of a contract by which he who was bound becomes free or liberated.
So what's the contract? Under the definition of liberation, they talking about a contract. To be free, you gotta enforce a contract. What's the first contract? You were born first. That's the first contract of primo genitor based upon Mother Nature, the rules of common law. Not to be confused with common law with the hyphen in the middle. That's compound adjective. There's common law, two words. And then they try to sneak in under feudal law, common law with a hyphen in the middle. They put the two together as compound adjective for adjectives. Who's the adjectives? The crayons, blacks, whites, browns, reds, yells, and greens. Don't let it fool you, that's legality. So let's talk truth. That's common law, two words. Based upon mother's consanguinity of inheritors that she passed down to everybody. You get your liberation by enforcing a contract. And the first contract is your consanguinity. What's the second contract? The second contract is enforcing your government, your politics, that supports your geographical landmass, your latitude, longitude. Puts together the officers, the public officers, which is the Moors. If you look up definition of Moor in Black Law Dictionary, it will tell you the It will tell you the officers that summon the corpse. You're the public officer, why? By primo genitor status, you're the oldest. And you're standing in your own homeland. So let's continue with the reading. Of color of office.
Such person must be at least officer de facto. Oh, paper.
Mm hmm. So it says what? That the person must be at least officer de facto. That means he gotta be at least a fake officer. Meaning through his body politics. The United States of America, the United States corporations. At least have de facto government. To use what? A pen by their hand, even though everything they do is ad void ab initio. You see it? What they tell you there, in order to have authority, let's go back, word color of, color of office, in order to have an office under color of authority, in order to have authority, you must have an office and through that office, you can use your pen. Moors have to now put together government to be an elected official. To have the power of the pen to bring themselves back to life. And do what's called an adverse claim, what are you adversely claiming? Yourself. Your national status. But a Moor, a mother, a Moor and mother. Must bring you back to life, she must sign off on your birth record. Through your government. Cause she is de jour. When they telling you right here, you must at least be de facto, at the very least, to use a pen. The mothers are automatically de jour because they give life. And their sons are out here taking life with a pen. Let's continue with the reading. Is that case law? Okay. Now let's get into color of title, that's the next definition. On page three thirty-two.
Color. Be apparent. Symbolic or similar chrome. Similar chrome of title. Also turned apparent. Apparent title.
Stop, that's quote unquote, right? Gotta say the quote unquote.
Quote unquote. Continue.
Say quote unquote.
Quote unquote.
Apparent title.
Apparent title.
Okay.
Any fact. Extremious to an act or mere will of the climate, climate, climate. Which has the appearance on its face. Of supporting his claim of a present title to land, but which for some defect. In reality falls short of establishing.
Mm hmm. So color of title, now they're talking titles. What type of title? You got car titles. You got deed titles. Fee simple title, we're talking real estate. All type of property that you have comes with some type of title. As well as, guess what else is a title? Your appellation as a Moor. Between appellation and a name. An appellation, we look at the definition, it'll tell you it's a title. But they'll slide in the word name too, but the appellation is a higher status because that goes back to the consanguinity. Anything can have a name. Toys R Us was a name. But your appellation is who you are, that's consanguinity. Especially as it relates to your last appellation of Bay, Ill, Day, Ali and Ill. So a title could be the title of several things, title of a book. Watch this. Black's Law Dictionary. That's the title of this law dictionary, Black's Law Dictionary. Diction needs to read. Black's Law Dictionary is a title. But watch this. The cover, the hardback is what color? Brown. The title of Black's Law Dictionary, signs and symbols, Blacks Law. And then the cover is brown, black and brown people. This book is all about you and how to subjugate you. This is the title on the rules. On how to deal with these people call themselves black. Or brown. Ie Central America, South America. The Aboriginal people of the world, copper colored people. Copper colored people. So it gives you the rules on how to subjugate them, at the same time. If you do the reading and you know how to comprehend. Do forensics. This is also what you call an exorcism. An exercise, exorcism, exercise in understanding fundamental law. What does the exorcist mean? You can use these same words to bring yourself back to life as a positive spell. Versus a negative spell, what we talking about spelling? Spelling of the words, how you spell words? They spell a lot of words in here, so a lot of a negative words, a lot of a positive words. And you gotta be there to find out exactly what is fundamental to you to use to your advantage. To create an exorcism. To get that demon out of your life. And who's the first demon in your life? You. Calling yourself black. You gotta use an exorcism and look up the definition of black person in the Black's Law Dictionary. In order to perform an exorcism to recognize under definition of black person, in the fourth edition, it says generic. Well damn, if black person means generic, then what's the original? Moor. It's an exorcism. But it's also spelling up negative because this is the rules that somebody's reading to subjugate you. So you must read it too as a defense to them. And guess who's always going to win? The primo genitor oldest brother, ie mother. Cause there's no brother without a mother giving birth to the sons. So the mother wins. The mothers teach the child first, the mothers gotta read and comprehend and understand law. Both ancient and modern. They signs and symbols right in front of your face. Watch this. You'll get other Black's Law dictionaries, what's the color of the book? Green and gold. Whose colors is that? The Moors colors. Go look at the kingdom of Morocco. And they're using green and gold. In their passport. For their passport, green and gold. They talking about Moors. With a dictionary, because they know that black people don't read. And they know Moors will read, but most Moors still can't comprehend or follow instructions. So they beating some Moors. They won't beat them all. Cause Moors gotta learn how to read, which means comprehend and use forensics, common sense. You gotta use your third eye and not just these two, you gotta use your brain, pineal gland. And see the signs and symbols right in front of your face, it's an exorcism. You don't even know Bible quote unquote. You know what Bible means? Book. You need law civics and history. This is an exorcism. How to fix yourself first. Then help fix others so that you come together as a collective and perform an exorcist now. On these people pretending to be you. Get that demon out of you first. And then get those other demons out of your seats. Cause they're holding the chairs. They're controlling the chairs, that's why they call them colonists, they say colonists are controlling the land, they're controlling the seat. And the body, which is you. So they're like a vampire, they suck off your essence. Of who you are, what does essence mean? It means your being. So when they tell you under the definition of tacit acquiescence. Tacit acquiescence. Tacit means to agree. Acquiescence, one word, acquiescence. Acque means to acquire. Essence means, essence means being, to acquire the being. That you agreed to allow them to acquire you, your being, your essence. Your culture, your folkways, your nationality. Tacit acquiescence, T A C I T. Acquiescence, to acquire the essence. Of your consanguinity, what'd they do? They stole your birthright. You was the first born. Let's continue with the reading.
Alright, um, color of title continuing. Anything in writing purporting to convey title to the land. Which defines the extent of the claim. It being. Imma, immaterial, how defective or imperfect the writing may be. So that is to sign. Symbolic or color of title.
Mm hmm. The word purporting. If you look up on the definition of color, colorful, colored, you see the word purporting, it would purports to be. See, they saying this about you and they saying this about themselves. They say, you say you black, but they know you ain't black. You're not what you purport to be in reality. Cause there ain't no black people on planet Earth. But at the same time, they claiming to be the sovereign. Claiming to be the superior and that's what, that's not what they purport to be, because that ain't true, that's just a fact. They have a superior position. That's a fact that they're ruling. But the truth is. The Moors will always got the birthright, which means they always. Always have a superior position, they just have to make the claim. So you go back to the, uh, Esau and Jacob in the Bible. Esau eventually comes back and makes his claim and he takes back his position. That's called coming full circle. Cause he was a sellout. He sold out his own birthright. Because Jacob used what's called counterintelligence on him along with Jacob's mother. Listen. Jacob's mother. Convinced both. Esau and Jacob's father etcetera to allow. Jacob to take the birthright. So the mother was in the conspiracy with Jacob. To take Esau's birthright. Cause don't, nothing happen without the mother's permission. So everybody call themselves black, guess where they got that permission from? Their mother. Don't get me wrong, who did the mothers get that connotable linguistics from? Their mother and also the sons called pastors, ministers, priests. Rabbis, etcetera. Sellouts, your son sold you out. Then they threatened you with use of force to stop telling your children exactly who they are. They dismantled the matriarchal council and they took over. So now the mothers is telling their children they're black. And tell them to be proud of being black and don't realize they're telling them an anthropomorphic story of a deceitful lie. That takes them out of law, because in law, that's blood. You're an outlaw when you're claiming to be a shadow. When you're claiming to be something that you are not, similacrum means similar. It's similar, but not the same. It's a knockoff. But not the original. Let's continue. So keep in mind now, let's get back to point. How did the Moors lose their land? Through an ink pen, through an act of Congress. So we're learning now, what did the colonists do to us? Keep in mind. That the conversal Moors, corn tale pro Moors, sellout Moors helped the colonists with that pen. So we're not blaming a hundred percent on the colonists because they had help. Keep in mind, the colonists have never won a war, a war without a Moor. Never. Let's continue the reading.
A title that is imperfect, but not so obviously so that it would be apparent to one not skilled in the law.
Stop, what did that just happen? Let's use an example of what you just read. You go out and buy a car right now. First thing they tell you is, you bought, let's say you paid. A hundred percent, Federal Reserve notes for it, you so-called paid it off. So-called, because Federal Reserve notes are fake color. Now they tell you, you gotta go register the car with the DMV. Why do I have to register it with someone? I thought it was mine, I just paid for it. Full stock and barrel. And then, and you say, I just gave you the Federal Reserve notes for it, what's the title? They say, oh, that's come through the mail. Wait a minute, soon as I gave you the Federal Reserve note, immediately through the medium of exchange, you were supposed to give me the title immediately. But they know that because of my psychosis. And the training of indoctrination. You didn't immediately get the title, because no one gets the title immediately, so you just say, oh, that's just the way it goes. So where is the title coming from? The DMV, wait a minute. What's the DMV gotta do with a car I just bought? That's a third party interloper. I just did a bilateral deal with someone, one-on-one, what's this third party person? Oh, you gotta go take your car over to the DMV, ie your conveyance, as Moors call them. Conveyance, proper. What do they do? Okay, here, here's your title, you gotta register it with us. To make it legally valid and they give you a registration piece of paper to put inside your blood compartment, guess what they just did? They just made a claim to your property. And let you ride off with it, they let you lease it. They own it now, you just signed it over to them. Through the registration, you registered with them, that means you gave it to them. Then they turn around and tax you for it. I have a long tax every year, you gotta get the tax every year. You gotta renew it, the license to keep that vehicle, because you're leasing it. Cause it ain't yours. And if you're a black person, you can't own property anyway. But back to the real point I'm trying to make, because I'm trying to query it down and give you an example of what they just said in the reading. That people will suffer from psychosis and cognitive dissonance. Don't realize that they just went down to DMV and gave away a car they just paid for. Cause they don't study law and history. They just are followership instead of scholarship. So then you got the so-called cops running around here telling Moors, you got invalid tags, what they saying? They saying. You ain't paid your taxes. And you claiming that's yours? No, that's mine. And you claiming that's yours? No, that's mine. You got a VIN number on that? That VIN number's assessed. To my mom and dad. You driving around in a car, my family let you ride around in. You think it's yours, it ain't yours. It belongs to the colonists. How do I know? What's your last name, black man? Johnson? Whoopi Goldberg? Whoopi Goldberg? Whoopi Goldberg? Huh, huh. Are you on a car in the house, Whoopi Goldberg? No, you don't. That's somebody else's last name. And you gotta pay some tithing, some taxes back to the real owner who owns everything that you're putting your signature in, Whoopi Goldberg. While claiming to be black. So these people suffer from a disability. Because they are minority, minor thinking. You think less of yourself. So they're beating you with the pen. Cause you don't know what the hell's going on, cause in the definition of black, and the linear entry says zero stimulus of the retina. Which mean you can't see and you can't think. They call that a lunatic. That's the critical clinical definition, lunatic. What's a lunatic? Somebody appears to be intelligent, but all of a sudden they start acting crazy again? You talk to a homeless person, you talk to him for about three minutes, like dang man, you got some intelligence. How you in the back of the street? Then all of a sudden, they space out. You say, oh, now I see why you in the street. Yo ass crazy. But that's what you say, but you don't understand the definition is lunatic. What does lunar mean? Lunatic means that they show signs of intelligence. What does lunatic mean? It means they show signs of intelligence, and then they go right back to being incompetent, acting like they have a disability where they can't think and function based upon the reality of something. They going back and forth between these personalities. And that's what black people do. Miss Whoopi Goldberg is very intelligent. And as soon as she called herself black, that's called a lunatic, cause wait a minute, you so smart, then why you calling yourself black? That's a lunatic. That's the truth. Let's continue with, how did the Moors lose their land? They lost it through a pen dealing with people that are lunatics. Let's continue.
Their writing upon its face professing to pass title, but which does not, either through one subtitle in the grantor, or a defective mode of convenience.
So what is that? The title's affect, defective. Is that defective, right? Is it effective or defective? Yeah, defective. The print is very small. So what's happening? The colonists don't have the proper title to sell you anything that already belongs to you. The colonists can't give Moors nothing, can't give them nothing. They can return what already belongs to them. Because any title that the colonists have given themselves was void ab initio, void from the beginning. It was null and void. So they're just simply returning something that already belongs to the Moor. Because their title is flawed. But they gonna pretend to say that it has validity. Why? Because you ain't made a claim as a Moor. That's why they say in law, possession is nine-tips of the law. So the colonists possess it, but they know the Moor really owns it. So the colonists possesses it and continues to function with it until you come and make the claim. So they gonna ride around in your car that they stole from you, until you come and say, hey, that's my car. They gonna say, prove it. Although they know they stole it from you. Prove it. Well, how do you prove it? How do you prove that's your car? Because you got the original title, your consecuity. You're the primo genitor, and you don't suffer as a lunatic no more. You didn't forget that that was your car. You all this time, colonists riding up down the street saying, man, that car is bad. Not even knowing it was yours, cause you thought it was black. And then when you find out that you're a Moor, the title says Moor on that car. It don't say colonist. But you know what the colonists did? They took the real title, put it away, and through hypoification created a fake title. That's why they call it a certificate of title, certificate of title. What's a certificate? It's the knockoff. It's not the original. The original somewhere with a wet ink signature on it, your consecuity. Wet ink signature on the real title, and they made another title that's not real. It's a certificate. Certificate means it's not real. It's not the authentic title. You claiming you on your car? Prove it. Yeah, man, see, I got the, uh, I got the title. Oh, you forgot the other words, brother. It's on the top of the document. It says certificate of title. So who's got the original? In this example, the DMV and the State of Colorado Corporation in this false territory jurisdiction that they're making a possession claim to, to under fee simple. But the Moors having a podium and a lodeo title, it's the original wet ink signature, which is called your blood. That's the wet signature, your blood. That's why Moors put seals on everything. What's the seal? Your thumbprint in red represents the blood. You got the original title. You're the primo genitor. It's nothing negative. That's not arguing with someone. Not trying to throw nobody on the bus. It's just the truth. Let's continue with the reading.
That which the law considers prima facie, a good title, but which by reason of some defect, not apparent, not appearing on its face, does not in fact amount to title. An absolute nullity? Nullity as a void deed, judgment, et cetera.
Should I word it nullity?
Nullity.
Nullity.
Nullity. An absolute nullity as a void deed, judgment, et cetera, will not constitute color of title.
Exactly. That makes sense. That tells you everything I just presented to you, that they themselves know it's void. That they know themselves that their concepts are flawed based upon the fact they're making a false claim of something, but since you don't know, they keep it. It's no different than they come out with movies, especially the cartoons, and the little girl don't know that she's the princess. And they got her running around thinking she's the janitor, Cinderella story. So you gotta understand, they've been making a false claim that they are perfectly aware of, which makes it fraud, because they're intentionally, deceitfully doing something in law they call that malfeasance and misfeasance based upon their acts, acts of legislation, which really isn't law. Because in law, the mothers rule. In legal legislation, the patriarchs rule. Everything they doing is false. And guess who else is an outlaw? These people that call themselves black. While simultaneously wanting justice, while checking the box black, they consent to being an outlaw, and they get treated like an outlaw. Cause they don't study history to understand what the Christian Black Code of seventeen twenty-four is still active today. Article thirteen. Read it when you have time. And it will tell you specifically that the people that you call cops and officers can create what's called capital punishment, which is death, or at the very least, beat you, beat you with impunity. Guess what else it says in article thirteen of the Christian Black Code seventeen twenty-four? That these people that's out here making a citizen's arrest, that they call caring these days? Karen's doing her job, and they don't even realize. Cause on the Christian Black Code, if you call yourself black, according to article thirteen of the Christian Black Code of seventeen twenty-four, it says that the citizens are basically deputized to beat you and kill you. Read it, and you will see it. And they can act with impunity. And you know why they can do both? The officer quote unquote, and the neighborhood watch can beat you or kill you with impunity? Cause if you continue to read article thirteen of the Christian Black Code seventeen seventeen, seventeen twenty-four, guess who lets them off the hook? The judge. It says it right there in the article, that the judge have under discretion to let them off the hook. So who is in cahoots with the judge? The district attorney. The office of the court. Who's picking the jury? The district attorney. It's a rigged system based upon article thirteen of the Christian Black Code of seventeen twenty-four. That all of them get to act with impunity. Why? Because you checking the box black and consenting to your own demise. Because you're a lunatic. You show signs of being highly intelligent, and then sometime you show signs of being a moron.
That's why people don't wanna talk to us.
Yes. So nationals come over here from other countries. They've already been told before they get here, man, don't talk to these people that call themselves black. They're lunatics. Even the ones that wear a suit and tie. Lunatic. So they think they're black. They sell out their own birthright, which means they'll sell out you too. Okay, let's continue with the reading. Keep in mind, we're talking about how did the Moors lose their land? Through a pen, through an act of congress of the colonists with the help of sellout Moors, conversal Moors, and coentel pro Moors to keep conscious Moors and unconscious Moors and a status of civil leader mortus. Let's continue with the reading of color of title.
Any instrument having a grantor and a grantee and containing a description of the lands intended to be conveyed. The lands, uh, the, uh, sorry, conveyed and at the words for their convenience gives color of title to the lands described. Such an instrument purports to be a convenience of the title, and because it does not, for some reason, have that effect, it passes only color or the surveillance semblance of a title.
So what happened? What's a conveyance? Uh huh. Something of mobility. So therefore, there was an act that happened. Something was conveyed, expressed out of, out of the mouth of both the colonists. They expressed that they were white. They expressed that things are deeds and mortgages. They expressed that there are titles, but they give you certificate of title. They express that they're the sovereigns. They express that they're the American. White people, et cetera. That's a conveyance on paper with the movement of the hand on paper, which is a false title, void ab initio. Either by their consent or with the pen, they're doing both. But guess who else is doing the conveyance? These people call themselves black. By their own consent out of their mouth, they say they're black, and they're proud. They say that they are Negroes. They say they are colored people. They say they're the minorities, and they're proud. That's a conveyance of language. That's a contract. And then you go and put it on paper, black, sign it, contract. So you convey through your own expression, conveyance. You convey also through a conveyance of mobility with the pen. You consented. So both parties are wrong. So there has to be a correction. How do you correct it? The mothers have to correct it. Your sons are running out here rogue. Your daughters are running out here rogue because they don't know themselves. So they copying off the last theme that was in the most lower self that they could kinda attach themselves to in order to get attention. Everybody wants attention, but they're looking for the wrong attention. Cause they recognize, the little boys recognize the pimp rolling around in the big Cadillac getting all the attention. So the little boy wanna grow up be what? A pimp? Cause he's getting, he's getting attention and getting money, quote unquote. It's the wrong attention. You got rapper females out here, they barely got on any clothes. Why? Cause they just, it's a race to the bottom to see who can do something to get the most attention. So therefore, we got, the mothers gotta reverse this thing and say, you gotta be in higher self. That way the attention is on something positive. So now you wanna mirror image something that's positive. Only the mothers can fix this thing. And we're doing that through more science civics. Cause first you must find out where you fell before you can rise. And we're going back into law and history to find out where we fail under some of these definitions of what they're doing today. So therefore, the mothers are the key. Don't get me wrong, the sons have a lot of responsibility too. We're all in this together. But the first thing we gotta do is understand, how did we lose everything? And now we gotta start studying, how do we get it back? You lost it from a pen in ignorance, and you can get it back through a pen and intelligence.